Good morning, everyone. Please take a moment to silence your cellphones, please. It's 9:00 a.m. and I'd like to call the June 18, 2014 City Council Meeting to order. Let the record reflect that all council members and city officials are present. And just a reminder for our viewing audience, the July and August Council meeting dates will vary slightly from the regular schedule. The new dates will be July 2 and July 9, August 13 and August 20. We will return to the regular schedule beginning in September. So please stand now for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Our Heavenly Father, we ask for your help as we try to share our individual and collective gifts with our community, to refurbish our intentions in a regular manner, to give of ourselves in ways that make a valued difference to our families, our neighbors, and to our town, and to our nation. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, John. We have some special proclamations and presentations, and first we have Sanitation Collection Worker Day.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas hard-working garbage men and women keep our community sanitary, make our cities and homes livable, and make our world smell better.[117.36][117.36](laughter) Whereas sanitation professionals are a sign of a healthy city and help protect the public from contagion, and whereas according to the Center for Disease Control, the eradication of many diseases in the western world was largely due to higher public sanitation standards, including efficient garbage disposal. And whereas on a daily basis, these workers expose themselves to a barrage of unknown objects such as broken glass, hypodermic needles, and chemicals that may spray their clothing and skin, resulting in garbage collection being rated the fourth-most dangerous occupation in the country. And whereas city sanitation workers are often the most invisible of our city employees. And whereas this June, the nation's industry will join together in celebrating trash collector, dumpster haulers, and everyone who does the dirty, smelly job that most people would rather not do, now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, does proclaim June 17, 2014, Sanitation Collection Worker Day, and encourages all citizens to recognize this vital and tremendous contribution which sanitation workers make to our quality of life. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 18th day of June, 2014, City of Punta Gorda, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And you guys do do such an awesome job. And accepting is Kathy Maher.
Thank you.[218.12][218.12](laughter)
Come on.
Come on up.
Hold on.
It's your time.[224.12][224.12](laughter)
I know him. We've met before. How you doing? Good.
I know him too.
He's a neighbor. (inaudible) And about low-possia price commercial, John Giamango, multi-family, Ben Whitaker Jr., yard waste, Tim Wilburn, yard waste, Jimmy Hunt, yard waste, Joe Tyler, residential, Gary Pennard, residential, Michael Duke's yard waste, Mike Putnam, who's soon going to retire and run away from the residential, and Vinnie Peroso, residential. We're missing a few today, but that's the class of 14.[268.14][268.14](applause)
Kathy, could you stand next to my place? There you go. You're not getting out of those.[272.14][272.14](laughter)
Well, my trash has already been picked up. They're early birds.
In our neighborhood.[287.12][287.12](laughter)
Yeah, that's true. It's gonna take all day. It's not like Santa Claus delivers all those stuff.
I won't make a lot of noise about them. Just on days like this, where we can barely stand the heat, I honestly don't know how they do it. It's... They're amazing to me, and I think I'll keep them around a while. Sounds good.
Thank you, Kathy.[304.12][304.12](applause)
And next, we have Amateur Radio Week, and Tom Cavanaugh will present.
My pleasure. Proclamation, City of Punta Gorda, Florida, whereas Charlotte County, Florida, has more than 500 licensed amateur radio operators, and whereas the Punta Gorda members of the Peace River Radio Society and the Charlotte Amateur Radio Society provide their service to the community, as well as the world at large, free of charge, and whereas these radio operators are on alert and available to render communication assistance during any local or national disaster, and whereas Charlotte County Team 2014, a collaboration of the Peace River Amateur Radio Society and the Charlotte Amateur Radio Society, will develop their emergency communication skills by participating in the Amateur Radio Relay League's Field Day exercise on June 28 and the 29, 2014. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda does hereby proclaim the week of June 22 to June 29, 2014, is Amateur Radio Week, in recognition of this important, important emergency preparedness exercise, and calls upon all citizens to pay appropriate tribute to the amateur radio operators of our community. Passed and duly adopted in regular session this 18th day of June, 2014, City of Punta Gorda, Rachel Kiesling, Mayor. And accepting will be David Hanson and Tom Manquese.[396.77][396.77](applause)
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
The hands of Charlotte County, Punta Gorda, are honored to be of service to the community. On June 28 to 29, we'll be doing a national simulated emergency test. You're invited to come down to the Charlotte Harbor Environmental Center beginning at 2:00 Saturday afternoon to come and see what we do. Thank you.
Thank you.[420.83][420.83](applause) Next, we have some very special presentations. Howard.
We have three employee awards, so let's start with the Tenure Service Award for Nancy Morris. Come on up, Nancy. And, well, Butch can tell you what the various recognitions you just recently got. Nancy, come on up. We've got the whole crew back.[452.83][452.83](applause)
Butch Arnold, Punta Gorda Police Department. Good morning, Punta Gorda, and good morning, Council. Nancy has been with us for 10 years now. She runs our communications section, which you know is the focal point for our customer service measures, and she's been doing that for quite a while now. We're very proud of her. She has won the 2004 Meritorious Service Award for service during Hurricane Charlie. She's won the 2004 Special Recognition Award. She's won the 2009 Exceptional Team Performance of the Year Award within our department, and the 2010 First Annual Innovation of the Year Award, and she was also 2011 Employee of the Quarter. Now, I could give you a bunch of acronyms and tell you what she's certified as. There's a bunch. You wouldn't understand them. She's done a lot, and she's certified in every way you can be certified to run a communications center, and she does a doggone good job. What we're extremely proud of is Florida APOC, which is Florida Association of Public Safety Communications Operators?
Officials.
Officials. Almost got it.[515.12][515.12](laughter) Nancy, as of just about a month ago, is the president of the Florida APOC. So once again, Punta Gorda makes a mark in the state of Florida as leaders, and she leads telecommunications, so has tremendous input into the profession. I always like to tell you something you don't know about our employees, so I will do that right now. She is an avid sailor with a 24-foot sailboat and sails around Charlotte Harbor. She's a proud grandma that you may not know of a one-year-old, not that they're here, with twins due in October, and she's an artist. What's an FAUX painter? I should probably...
Oh, painter.
Okay, and she's...
I think things look like they're really hot.
She's awesome.[560.54][560.54](laughter) And I will tell you, I will tell you one last thing that she doesn't know I'm gonna mention. Did you know that Nancy has been on the David Letterman Show? She was actually taken out of the audience, and as a consequence of that, many years ago, she is a member of the Screen Actors Guild, and whenever they replay that particular show, you got a royalty check. Isn't she...[582.66][582.66](laughter) We got an actor. I think that's awesome. Right.[586.66][586.66](applause)
I was gonna say, my dad told me.
I know. Come to...
It's more intimidating.
My dad always said, "Don't do anything you don't enjoy doing because life is too short." And yet, I tell my children, "If you want to make a difference in this world, step outside of your comfort zone." Right? So I'm kinda finding a balance there. I've been outside of my comfort zone, and I am doing something that I love to do. And I just want to thank the department for the encouragement and support they gave me the last 10 years. It's been awesome, and I'm looking forward to another eight.[628.41][628.41](laughter)
Now, we have, we have some long-termers here. We have two 30-year awards. The first one is from our Billing and Collection Division, and that's Cindy English. So Helen, why don't you come on up, and Cindy?
Good morning. Helen Meyer, Billing and Collection Supervisor, and it's been my honor and privilege to... Yay, Cindy Sue.[654.23][654.23](laughter) She said she was gonna do it upside down.[657.41][657.41](laughter) To supervise Cindy for several years now, and so Cindy began her career with the city as a receptionist at the wastewater plant way back when the wastewater plant was still out on Henry Street. The operation was soon relocated to Vermont Road, and Cindy made the long trek out to that site for a few years before transferring to the Billing and Collections Office as a customer service rep, coming full circle back to Henry Street once again. Cindy worked her way up to customer service rep and billing specialist. For many years, Cindy has been in charge of processing the monthly meter readings, producing the utility bills, and mastering the unruly burster machine, which is my personal nemesis. Her loyalty and dedication are demonstrated by her desire to schedule vacation time only on non-billing days.[707.54][707.54](laughter) It's true. For 30 years. She is an incredible asset to our team. Cindy has been married to Richard English for 42 years, and they have two children. Their son, Brian, works for Charlotte County in the IT department, and daughter Megan is a CTT II... That's tough to say. ...in the U.S. Navy. Megan is also mom to Cindy's two grandsons, Oliver and Orion. At this stage in her life, and that's the way she wanted me to put it, Cindy has taken up riding motorcycles and tries to spend some time each weekend on her Boulevard S40. She tells us she has not gotten a tattoo, yet. Yet.[746.35][746.35](laughter) Thank you, Cindy, for so many years of dedicated service.[750.12][750.12](applause)
Now, the next 30-year service award, I don't... Who is that person?
Says Mary.
I don't know who that is. We have a 30-year service award for somebody called Mary Pace. We call her Marion. Come on.[771.12][771.12](applause)
For the record, Dave Drury, Marion's our procurement manager, and like you said, she's been here 30 years. She started with the city back in '84 as a courier for the warehouse. Since then, she's worked all positions in procurement, so I guess she can say she's done it all. She has three public procurement certifications. The same problem with Butch's certifications is lots of acronyms. She has three of them. She is also, she's a past president of the Florida Association of Public Procurement Officials, so there again, that's making Punta Gorda look great. She has a wonderful hubby, she claims, a son and two awesome grandkids. In her spare time, she is the vice president of a crane company. She runs a vacation rental, rentals up in Pigeon Forge, Tennessee, and then she likes riding her trike. She's got three-wheel Harley that she loves, and that's her way of getting away. And what she's preparing for the future is retirement and teleco planes, Tennessee. So this is Marion. Marion, you're more than just a coworker, you've been a friend for a lot of years. I've put up with your, likes of you for 22 years.[842.31][842.31](laughter) And as you have me. Her mother and sister are in the audience. Would they mind coming up and getting a picture, the three of you, please? This doesn't happen every day. Let's get a picture. She also says something about she has the world's best boss, but that was, I wouldn't bring that up.[863.43][863.43](laughter)
I thought that said world's best city mayor.[868.62][868.62](laughter)
I just saw boss here.
You're not getting out of the elevator.
A Monday morning, a Monday morning when we came to work, Marion was stuck in the elevator.[880.81][880.81](laughter) And I walked right by, went right upstairs.[884.75][884.75](laughter)
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all.[889.75][889.75](applause)
I just want to say real quick, thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to work for the City of Punta Gorda and serve our citizens. It's been a very interesting week. My sister surprised me from Michigan for my 50th birthday party, and now I get this opportunity to be presented for 30 years. Thank you very much, and I'm looking for seven to eight more.[912.37][912.37](laughter)
Thank you.[914.37][914.37](applause)
That's the magic number.
You'll know.
We'll just take one moment to pause for the mass exodus. Okay, at this time, if your name is in for a nomination for a board or committee, and you would like to take an opportunity to introduce yourself and say a few words, now is the time. Board or committee nominations. I don't see any. Okay, now we are going to move into the public hearing agenda, and we have several, so it may take us a little while.
I'll go as fast as I can.
Thank you.
The first is GA-08-14. This is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 23, Traffic, Article 2, Parking Areas, Section 23-17E, Punta Gorda Code, limiting on-street parking on Olympia Avenue between Cross Street, US 41, and Sullivan Street, providing for conflicts and severability and providing an effective date.
After Council recommended that we go ahead and do this, we put some temporary signs up. They do say Monday through Saturday, I mean, Monday through Friday, and your request was to make it Monday through Saturday. Now, that's different from all the other signs in the area, so just everybody's...
Is everybody okay having conflicting signs at two different blocks?
I'm okay. I'm okay with that.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing. If any would like, anyone would like to speak on GA-08-14, please come to the podium, state your name. You have three minutes. Last call. Public input on GA-08-14.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA-08-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have GA-07-14.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 12, Business Tax Act, Section 12-17, Vending and Amusement Machines, Punta Gorda Code, to clarify the local business tax rate for vending and amusement machines, and to reduce the rate levied per machine, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Another ordinance that we previously discussed, this is to correct the inequity with situation where we had with the laundromat and they had all those...
And could, part of our discussion initially was that if, if it was a business that was solely based on vending, they would still be paying their local business tax, correct?
Correct.
The receipt, and that would be their first location, and then they would be charged for the additional machines, the per-machine rate?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions before we open it up?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing on GA-07-14. Anybody would like to speak? Last call for public input on vending machine local business tax.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have GA-07-14.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 12, Business Tax Act, Section 12-17, Vending and Amusement Machines, Punta Gorda Code, to clarify the local business tax rate for vending and amusement machines, and to reduce the rate levied per machine, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Another ordinance that we previously discussed, this is to correct the inequity with situation where we had with the laundromat and they had all those...
And could, part of our discussion initially was that if, if it was a business that was solely based on vending, they would still be paying their local business tax, correct?
Correct.
The receipt, and that would be their first location, and then they would be charged for the additional machines, the per-machine rate?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions before we open it up?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing on GA-07-14. Anybody would like to speak? Last call for public input on vending machine local business tax.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of GA-07-14. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA-07-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next, we have GA-04-14.
This also is the first reading of a public hearing, first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending Chapter 23, Traffic, Article 2, Parking Areas, Section 23-13, Parking in Lashley Park and Ponce de León Park, Subsections B, Punta Gorda Code, to allow for temporary parking by Marina customers, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Another item that we previously talked about, we're gonna have three spots set aside for the ship store folks, 30 minutes, and we can amend it as, based on how well the tenants are using those spaces or not.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, GA-04-14. Public input, please come to the podium. You have three minutes. State your name. This is a public hearing. Last call for GA-04-14.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of GA-04-14. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve GA-04-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we will move into quasi-judicial public hearings.
Yes, the next five items require testimony to be sworn, so anyone who is going to be providing testimony or evidence for the next five public hearings, please rise to be sworn by the court at this time.
Raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in today's proceedings? And when you come to the podium to testify, please state your full name and indicate you have been sworn.
First is AX-01-14, the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, annexing within the corporate area of the City of Punta Gorda, 2,000, excuse me, 204.97 acres being a portion of the South Highlands, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 6, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, together with Sections 21 and 28, Township 41 South, Range 23 East, being more particularly described in the Boundary Survey attached as Exhibit A, in accordance with the annexation provisions of Chapter 171, Part 2, Florida Statutes, redefining the boundary lines of said city in conformance therewith, amending the official boundary map of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, providing that existing land use and zoning designation remain until changed by city ordinance, providing for acceptance of dedications, providing directions for the city clerk, providing for conflict and severability, and providing an effective date.
Good morning, for the record, Joan LaBeau, Urban Design, and this has been the long-awaited loop coming into the city's boundaries. I would like to enter the staff report into record, and we are available if there are any questions.
Questions? No.
Move approval of AX...
Uh-oh.
Sorry.
Okay. And no questions as of right now? Okay, so now we're gonna open the public hearing. Please come to the podium. State your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning. Jerry Waxler with the McCory Law Firm. I'm here today on behalf of Wilder BN Parcel C LLC. Wilder is the owner of that enclave that will be created in the middle of this annexation. And I'm not here to speak to the legality of creating an enclave. I know you've used a different process, but Wilder does object to this annexation. They have concerns over their ability to develop that property, how it will integrate with the city's property when you have created a fairly sizable enclave right smack dab in the middle. And we wanted to simply lodge our objection to that annexation, thinking that those issues have not been fully addressed, and it would be premature to annex while you create that enclave. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody wishing to speak on AX-01-14? Last call for public input on AX-01-14.
Move to close the public hearing? Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing of AX-01-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of AX-01-14.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve AX-01-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Okay, next, we will move on to the next quasi-judicial, which is CP-01-14.
Yes, this is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, amending the City of Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan Future Land Use Map to Include Newly Annexed Lands, amending the Future Land Use Map to Reflect the Change in the Current Designations of Low Density Residential/County, LDR/County, Low Intensity Industrial, LI/County, and Commercial/County, C/County, to Highway Commercial Corridor/City, HCC/City, for 204.97 acres being a portion of South Highlands, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 6, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, together with Sections 21 and 28, Township 41 South, Range 23 East, being more particularly described in Exhibit A, the Loop Area, attached here too, provided for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Good morning, for the record again, Joan LaBeau, Urban Design, and this is the Comprehensive Plan Amendment that changes the future land use, that gives the property of the city's designations for land use as it is developed. I'd like to enter the staff report into record. This was brought before a planning commission, was approved by them, and we recommend approval as well. I'm available for any questions.
Questions for Joan?
No.
We're going to open the public hearing. If you would like to speak on CP-01-14, please come to the podium. State your name. Public comments on CP-01-14. Last call for comments on CP-01-14.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing for CP-01-14.
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of CP-01-14. Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve CP-01-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. Next, we have Z-01-14.
This is the first reading of an ordinance, which will read by title only. Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Punta Gorda, Florida, rezoning 204.97 acres being a portion of South Highlands, according to the map or plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book 2, Page 6, Public Records of Charlotte County, Florida, together with Sections 21 and 28, Township 41 South, Range 23 East, being more particularly described in Exhibit A, the Loop Area, attached here too, from its current Charlotte County zoning classification of Industrial General, IG, Agriculture, AE, Residential Single Family, 5 units per acre, RSF-5, Mobile Home Conventional, MHC, and Commercial Intensive, CI, to City of Punta Gorda Zoning District, Highway Commercial, HC, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Thank you.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tab, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This is the third step in the process of the annexation, so the rezoning is the final step, and we are available for questions.
Questions for Terry?
No. Thank you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, Z-01-14. If anybody would like to speak on Z-01-14, please come to the podium. State your name. If anybody would like to speak on Z 01-14, please come to the podium, state your name. Public input on Z 01-14. Last call for comments.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve Z 01-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And Tom had some comments he would like to take a minute.
Yes, if I could, please. This conversation started almost two and a half years ago, when Steve Hagenbuckle's team was introduced to our design studio to discuss the development of the loop. They met with urban design, growth management, utilities, fire and police, and started the discussion about how to make this happen. They spoke about density, height, impact fees, setbacks, open space, expedited permitting, and the list goes on. City council staff and the Terracap team were intent on making this happen. Yes, some setbacks along the way concerning annexation and creating enclaves, but they were resolved with the cooperation of the county commissioners by creating an interlocal agreement. We may have picked up some additional road maintenance, more than we bargained for, but it got done. So today is the beginning of a new journey in the development of the loop, and clearly demonstrates that Punta Gorda is open for business. Congratulations and welcome, Mr. Hagenbuckle and the Terracap team. If you would like to say a few words, we would love to hear from you.
Well, I'd like to echo Tom. It's been two and a half years, and a lot of, a lot of things transpired in the last two and a half years, but the, one thing that resonates the most with us and our team from Waldrop, Alexis Crespo, Mike Davis, who's been a partner at Terracap for eight years now and the, and the rest of our organization, is we've always been big believers in southwest Florida, and bigger believers in Punta Gorda and Charlotte County. We have been heavily invested in the area for many, many years, and going through this process, I would encourage other counties and other cities to learn from the professionalism, the cooperative spirit, and the positive energy that we saw through this whole process. Because it's teamwork that makes these things happen, and it, you know, it started with understanding and identifying the appropriate way to go about a complex situation, which I know Tom played a, an integral role in identifying. David, many emails back and forth and research validating that, along with our counsel, Kevin Denti, confirming that everything that we were, were doing was appropriate, and I cannot express in words what a pleasure it is to work with you, Howard, over the years. We met before this started, and I had a great, you know, feeling about you as an individual and as a professional, and you've just been steadfast through this entire process and just been a real treat. So we're very, very excited, because with the new land use, it allows us the flexibility to engage into very, very, or shall I say, next steps of very, very serious dialogue with the very developers and financial organizations that make these types of visions become reality. The flexibility that you have permitted through the rezoning effort allows us to create something very special. Our commitment to Punta Gorda and to Charlotte County and southwest Florida is to do everything in our power to maintain the integrity of that area and those intersections, and ultimately create a, a very strong economic driver for Punta Gorda that we can all be proud of. So that being said, we're very grateful to the residents of Charlotte and Punta Gorda, but more particularly the group up there, and the group in planning and zoning that we spent many hours with, as you mentioned earlier, from police to fire to, to every group in the, in the organization. So again, thank you very much for all of your time, and this has been a, a true team effort, and we're looking forward to the outcome. Now, we still have a lot of work to do, so we're going to have to spend a lot more time together now, because now is when the work really starts, but we needed this foundation, and we have the foundation, and we thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move on to V 02-14.
Yes, this is a request by Jonathan Miller, as agent for L-E-M-P-V-I-L-P, property owner of Encore Gulfview RV Resort, for a variance to the land development regulations pursuant to chapter 26, section 16.10, Pugler Code. To allow an eight-foot-high PVC privacy fence to be installed along the front street yard side of the property instead of four-foot in height, as permitted per chapter 26, section 8.5B, Pugler Code. The short legal description is ZZZ 294123P6, and this is otherwise known as 10205 Burnt Store Road, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. This request is not unexpected from the Encore RV Park due to the widening of Burnt Store Road. There was a taking of some of their land, which brought the road very close to that first row of available spaces for them to be able to rent. Staff and the Board of Zoning Appeals does recommend approval of their request. They have included with their request that they will be installing 200 cocoa plum shrubs along the outside, as well as 15 palms, to, to break up the solid fence line to enhance the look of the overall.
That was going to be my question about the landscaping is, I don't have, I don't have any idea, but are 200 cocoa plums enough to hide the appearance of the?
I mean, they're going to start out as three gallons, so they aren't going to be the height of the fences when they start, but I think, I think it will help tremendously, yes.
Will that be made a specific condition of the variance?
Yes, I would like to include that.
Carolyn?
I guess my question is, in terms of the road itself, was that a county paid for, or was that FDOT? Do you know?
I don't know.
Burnt Store Road widening?
The widening.
That was both sales tax and through NPL money.
So FDOT, then. I, I guess I was just concerned, I, I feel bad that these, that these residents have to support the cost of a fence, when many communities, the, again, FDOT would put in the fence because of the sound and the, as a sound barrier. So I don't know whether they have any recourse, but it would seem to me that they may want to pursue that avenue.
Nancy?
The same issue exists with Burnt Store Meadows. And I've, I've talked with them and the property management organization for their POA, and it just wasn't part of the plan. There was money, they did get money, so Burnt Store Meadows Association did get some funds, but it was insufficient to build a wall like what River Haven, uh, Manufactured Home Park did. So I don't know what kind of funds might have been given to this community, that they might have gotten from that, but I would agree that it wasn't, in my mind, it wasn't really well planned. But I would, I don't know about the amount of landscaping, that was going to be my concern as well, because I know the city is, is along, Henry Street has put up a, a lot of landscaping, layered landscaping, and I would think if they could do that as well, I don't know if what they have planned is sufficient, but would like to see that it's nicely landscaped.
Any other questions before we open the public hearing?
No.
Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on V 02-14, please come to the podium, state your name, you have three minutes. V 02-14. Last call for input on V 02-14.
Move to close V 02-14. Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing for V 02-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move approval of V 02-14.
And, and for the record, that's to include as a condition to the variance, the landscape that was made part of the record.
As I understand, that's, was their plan.
I just want to make sure that it, that when you approve it, it's approved with that condition.
With that condition.
Yes.
Second.
So we have a motion, a second to approve the variance with the landscaping plan that was submitted into the record. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And next we have V 03-14.
Yeah, and before I go on, we've experienced in the past where an offer had been made to landscape, but it wasn't included in the motion, and there was confusion as to whether or not it was actually to be a enforceable condition, so that's why I'm, I'm, I make sure that we.
It's going to be each, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next is V-03-14. This is a request by Stephen M. Farrow, president, Farrow Construction and Remodeling, Inc., for a variance to the land development regulations pursuant to chapter 26, section 16.10, Pugler Code, to allow a circular driveway with two 16-foot-wide drives for a total of 32 feet of total driveway width through the right-of-way for a model home, instead of a maximum total width of 28 feet, as permitted per chapter 26, section 10.3HC, Pugler Code. This is at 1492 Akia Stah Drive, Punta Gorda, Florida.
Good morning, for the record, Terry Tubbs, zoning official, and I have been sworn. Staff did receive this request as a result of a local contractor who was planning on constructing a model home at his site. There previously was a single-family home on the site, and so when the improvements were done along Akia Stah, the contractor just automatically went ahead and installed the, the one driveway apron and culvert pipe that is, that is existing on the site. Staff did review this, and based on the location of the, the model home, that Akia Stah is a very heavily traveled road, staff felt for safety reasons, it would be better to have the two 16s for this particular location, and has recommended approval along with the Board of Zoning Appeals.
So is the apron that's existing staying, or is that being?
Yes, the one that is there is staying, and then they're adding the other side at 16, so that, that it would be a clear turn.
Questions for Terry?
Is it going to be a circular drive?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that was my question as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Terry before we open? Okay, this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on V 03-14, please come to the podium and state your name, you have three minutes. Public comments on V 03-14. Last call.
Move to close.
We have a taker. Come to the podium and state your name, please.
Hi, good morning. My name is Stephen Farrow, president, Farrow Construction and Remodeling. I have, I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Any other public comments?
Move to close.
I was just going to say, I'm pleased that you're doing a circular, interested in doing a circular driveway there for the safety on Akia Stah. It's very important.
The only way, the only way for safety, you couldn't back in and out of Akia Stah like that, it's much too busy.
Right, I think it's very appropriate, then there would be people wanting to park across the street and then walk across Akia Stah.
There's, there's really nothing across.
And we don't want to encourage that either, that would be unsafe, so, thank you.
So we do have a motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously.
Move to approve V 03-14.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve V 03-14. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried unanimously. And I know we did get some comments early on about the driveway, but it really is the safest possible, and it's not going to be, I would guess, a model home forever. Eventually, they become a regular residence in, in time, so I think it's a good, and we're getting a new, another new house in Punta Gorda, so thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have no ordinance resolution readings, and we will move into the consent agenda. And first, I would like to ask the council members if they have any items to pull from the consent agenda. I have none.
I just have a correction to the minutes.
Okay.
Just do those now?
Well, we're going to do public comments, and then we can.
Okay.
No items to be pulled? Okay. So now we have citizens' comments on consent agenda items only. Come to the podium, you have three minutes to speak on the consent agenda items. Now would be the time. Okay, we have no citizens' comments, and Carolyn has a change to the minutes.
On line 192, we were talking about the real estate sign, size of those signs potentially being changed, and it has, that I agreed, and I, I believe I adamantly disagreed, so I just want to incorporate that, that I disagreed with that.
Okay.
And I think Karen had some other language that I may actually have said in my actual statement, but I said, as I was thinking about it, I really disagreed.
Okay. Thank you.
I remembered that disagreement.
Okay, with that correction included.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And I would just like to welcome CHNEP to the city of Punta Gorda.
Thank you.
That's right. NEP is now a part of it.
We have more acronyms, thanks to NEP.
We've had the debate, is it SHNEP or is it NEP?
It's NEP.
SHNEP.
Lisa prefers SHNEP.
Oh, SHNEP.
That sounds like something we should be drinking. On a cold.
That's what you told me.
Yeah, I thought it was, okay, SHNEP, SHNEP it is.
No, no, it's one syllable, SHNEP.
SHNEP.
As opposed to schnaps.
The drinking was appropriate when we talk about clean water.
Okay, now we are going to move into the regular agenda, and we have a opportunity for citizens' comments on the regular agenda items only, which would be the utility fund operating and capital improvement program, update on traffic signal maintenance agreement, and status update on the RO plant. Any citizens' comments on those regular agenda items? Seeing none, we will now move into budget, and we have one item, which is the 2015 utility fund.
Good morning, Sharon Nippenberg, comptroller. This is again a part of the, the city's budget process, and my fan club is here. We will be discussing only the utilities fund this morning. As you recall, last month, we were covering the general fund and various funds that go with the general fund, but we, we postponed discussing the, the utilities fund, hoping that we would have additional information on the big reverse osmosis project. We do not have that information yet, so we will go on with the operations and the balance of the capital improvement project, and we will reserve the discussion for the RO plant for an August agenda item, if that is all right with the city council. I believe that will still give us plenty of time to make those decisions. So we'll go with, following the, the PowerPoint, first, we're identifying in a very high view just what does a utilities fund look like? When we look at the revenues, we look at the operations, transfers, debt service, how are we sitting for balancing the budget? As you can see, in 2015, the total revenues of 15.3 million. In addition to that, we did need 2 million of financing to take care of those parts of the reverse osmosis project that we have already committed to, and that would be the well-field testing. So that is necessary to at least get us to the point where we can get our permit, and where, where we can get to a, a design on the project. So this is not include any construction, other than the well field itself for testing. Operations, again, as we did with all the other funds, we did try to hold the line to the 2014 level. We were not quite able to do that. There are some needs at the plant that cannot be overlooked when you have that much infrastructure in place. If they tell me they need 400,000, and instead of 350,000, they've clearly identified what they need, and it's all very reasonable. We also had to increase the wastewater plant project specifically for some concerns about the major pumps and blowers that are out there. the major pumps and blowers that are out there. So we, we are going to gradually increase their budget to an appropriate level. Band-aiding does not make sense, so. And, and as you can see, you, and when we look down at fund balance, we can afford to do that. So I think we've placed ourselves very well with the current rate structure to both take care of the needs of the existing plant and begin to prepare for the future RO plant. So that's in summary what we're looking at with revenues and expenditures. The transfers, we'll go into a little bit of detail, as far as you'll remember, that our new financial policy is in place for transferring the one million, one hundred and twenty thousand to, to cover the recurring annual needs for existing booster plants, existing lines, and it's prudent to not finance that because it's just going to occur every single year. In addition to that, we have some transfers for some smaller, new capital projects that we could actually afford to pay cash for. Now, in the future, when we look at seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, we may change our minds, and we may not want to do those with cash once we incur the new debt for the RO plant. We may decide we want that for debt service and that future projects may need to be financed. That's all a decision for the future. This would just be staying with current assumptions of where we are right now. The debt service, again, is broken into two components. The existing debt service, which the good news is, in 2016, we'll make our last payment on that land that we purchased several years ago, so that current debt will drop from nine to forty-three down to three forty. The only remaining amount is an, is a state revolving loan fund that we did for the deep well injection project out of the wastewater plant, and that will go on for some time. So it, it kind of dovetails nicely with introducing the new debt for the RO plant. So we show, beginning in fifteen, the current financing recall that we're doing this year, the five million, the, the first debt service will pop in on that in fifteen, and then in sixteen, when we have to do that two million up there, which is actually slightly more than that, but it's a carryover from the prior year, the debt service will pop in on that. So the new debt service of six hundred thousand sort of supplants the old debt service that's dropping off of a half a million, so it's kind of clean what we're doing with the debt.
Any questions? Under the revenues and in excess of expenses, why is there a blank space? They are under sixteen.
In sixteen, we did not have any excess revenues, and if you look up under revenues, we've shown use of reserves.
Okay.
So we've actually used seven hundred and forty thousand dollars of reserves intended to cover the capital projects for that year.
Okay, thank you.
Because we're actually transferring in over a million of additional for capital projects, so it's not covering operations. We can cover operations with our, with our current revenues. It's for capital.
Okay.
So that was a good question. Thanks for pointing that out.
I get, my question is, in 2017, we have less revenue than we do in 2016, and I was just wondering why. I mean, I would anticipate that we are taking in the same amount of revenue for the utilities, or maybe even more with new construction going on. I just, I'm sorry.
When we include, that's not just operating revenues, I apologize, you know, when we get you up to that high level, it's hard to see. The operating revenues do not change. In fact, there, we have them slated to grow a modest one percent a year, but it's the impact fees to cover debt service. So, in other words, we're allowed to take the impact fees that are sitting over in another fund and contribute them to this fund to help pay for debt service. And we have a, we have a reserve of that right now, so we're gonna, we're gonna pull down on that. When we get to the point, this is important to know, when we get to the point where we actually determine this is what the new plant is going to cost, then we'll make those decisions about what do we really want to use the impact fees for? How much do we really want to finance, and what should the rate increase be? For now, we're trying to just hold status quo and not make those changes.
So, operating revenues from user fees are going up each year. It's when the debt service goes down and you don't need as much impact fees, you'll see that, that's why the actual total revenues may go down slightly, but the operating revenues are still going up.
Yes, it's just not shown here.
And if you were to see the full-blown pro forma, which I believe was in your agenda packet, you'll see the breakout between operating revenues and other types of revenues. Another good question. Anything else before we move on? Okay, next, next slide. This is just to emphasize where we are on our reserves. As you recall, we did establish an, that the operating reserve would now be seven and a half percent, and again, so that's at the bottom, and because we do not have in seventeen, eighteen, and nineteen, we are not showing any cost for the RO plant, it looks like your reserves do not need to be very high. They're a million, one point two, one point one. Once we take the RO plant and put that into this, that reserve number will change quite a bit. So, yes, your reserves appear to be in a, in great excess of what they need to be, but when we adjust that and put the RO plant in, it will change. But I, I would say we've set the stage very nicely. We're in a good position for going forward with a big project as opposed to scrambling and trying to find adequate. I think when we present this to either banks or, or bondholders, that they'll like what they see.
What about the state revolving fund? Is that still an option?
Absolutely.
Okay. But we need to know what amount we need before we apply.
We have been in communication with them, we understand their process and the timeline, and, and yes, it's definitely a viable option.
It's probably going to be the option, but.
Well, we, we, we want them to stay on their toes and offer us the best they can. If there's no questions on reserves, then we'll move on. This is the point where we go into identifying the capital needs. The, the program on a summary view, Kristen, if we can just go to the next one, we're gonna show you, again, at the very high level, the revenues are coming in from a transfer from the operating fund. The additional transfer is above and beyond what your policy calls for, and this, as you can see, made sense to use reserves at this point in time. We may change our minds for the future years rather than do additional financing. The two million, we did need to finance. The one point six you see there is just a carryover of the financing that we were, that we're doing in fourteen to finish up those projects. So you can see the capital project totals.